The meeting will please come to order. Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, March the 20th. I am Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. On behalf of all my colleagues, we want to welcome everyone who was with us in council chambers and also those who are with us virtually. We are going to have our opening prayer by Marylina Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Padre celestial, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo, le pedimos su orientación y compresión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad. Que nos mantenga fuera del peligro y bendecir a los que están en autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amén.
Amen. And now, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Owens?
Here.
Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Oliver?
Present.
Councilwoman Harley?
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson? Councilwoman Johnson? Councilman Field? Councilman Field? Councilwoman Bracy?
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera? Councilwoman Hackett? Councilwoman Spadola?
Present.
President Congo?
Here.
Eight present and five absent.
All right, thank you. I would also like to recognize on the register of wheels from the register of wheels department, Sarah Poperty, who was with us this evening. Councilmember McCoy? Let me suspend you.
I'm sorry. That girl being cute and not have my glasses on. Sorry about that, guys. I move that the council suspend the rules for the purpose of the mayor presenting his budget address.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to suspend the rules for the purpose of the mayor to present his budget address. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, I would like to assign council members Spadola and McCoy to escort Mayor John Carney and First Lady, Mrs. Tracy Carney, into council chambers. Everyone, please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment and thank the people of Wilmington who aren't in this room with us, obviously, who've entrusted me with this responsibility. I promise to work hard every day to serve all of you. President Congo, to you, the members of City Council, thank you for inviting me in here with you. I look forward to working together for the people that we all represent. To the members of my leadership team who are here, sitting behind you, I'm honored to serve with you. Thank you for your service. Seventy-two days ago, I was sworn into office alongside City Council. I promised then to build on the progress Wilmington has made over the past several years and to make sure that that progress is felt in every neighborhood. Since then, I've spent time in almost every neighborhood in the city, and I've heard from our fellow residents about the challenges they're facing. I met with members of council and heard what your priorities are for the people we both represent. It's clear to me that Wilmington continues to show resilience and grit, working together to rebuild from Hurricane Ida, bouncing back from the once-in-a-lifetime COVID-19 pandemic five years down, learning from the challenges brought to light by the Black Lives Matter demonstrations. Wilmington not only weathered these difficult moments, were coming out stronger than ever before and with a renewed sense of hope and purpose. In the past few years, our city has seen investment like no other time in recent history. Unprecedented funding flowed in from the federal government under President Biden, from state government when I was your governor, and from the private sector, thanks to the hard work of the Perzicke administration and all of you. These investments have grown our business and entertainment districts. They've helped our city feel more vibrant and alive. Now, with our support, partners like True Access Capital, Wilmington Alliance, and Westside Groves are putting an intense and needed focus on growing small businesses and commercial corridors across the city. We're seeing innovation and energy injected into our communities from the ground up. Organizations across our city, including Jumpstart Wilmington, Woodlawn Trustees, Habitat for Humanity, and the Wilmington Land Bank are tearing down vacant and dilapidated homes, building new ones, and making homeownership possible for countless city residents. Importantly, they're using small minority-owned businesses to do much of the work. With the support of millions of federal and state housing dollars, the Reach Riverside project is replacing the old and tired WWII-era public housing project with a new community of rental homes and opportunities for homeownership. The residents of the East Side welcomed the opening of Maurice Pritchett Academy. I was there yesterday and will soon see a new and transformed people settlement construction has already begun. Our youth and families will experience new life in our public gathering spaces. We're making upgrades to Hicks Anderson Community Center and overhauling Helen Chambers Park. Barbara Hicks Park and Albert Park in Southbridge are getting a much-needed refresh. And across our city, we're improving our aging water sewer infrastructure, thanks to funds from our friends in state and federal government. These investments mean real improvements to our environment in this city. The bottom line is this: Neighborhoods are rebounding and finally receiving the attention they deserve. The budget we proposed tonight will build on this progress. President Biden used to say, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." You will see my values reflected in this budget, a commitment to keeping costs down for city residents, and to lifting up every neighborhood in this city. This year, we faced major budgetary challenges with no easy solutions. Over the past few years, Wilmington has been the beneficiary of an unprecedented infusion of state and federal money. If you read the news, I think it's fair to say those days are over. Our projections show that wage tax revenue growth is not keeping up with the increases in costs to provide many of our vital city services. At the same time, residents are seeing increased costs on basic items, including, as we all know, high electricity bills. This is a basic math problem. Costs continue to rise faster than our revenues can keep up with. My goal is to more efficiently manage the operations of our city government with our team sitting here in the room tonight. Clearly, the most difficult challenge for all of us and for all Wilmington property owners is property reassessment. It's confusing and it's complicated. Over the last year, Newcastle County was required by the courts to reassess the value of every property in the county, obviously every property here in the city, for the first time in forty years. We're still working with the county to determine whether these new values are consistent and fair across the city. We have to use these new assessed values in setting a property tax rate for this year, and we have chosen to lower our tax rate to stay revenue neutral, no new revenues from property taxes. However, even though the tax rate will be decreased significantly, some people will still see their tax bill go up, others will see it go down, others will stay the same based on the new assessment. Unfortunately, this is beyond the city's control. Our goal is that residents are paying their fair share and nothing more. What is within our control is ensuring that we don't compound the problem, and that's why I made it a priority to balance our budget without seeking additional property tax revenues with the recent reassessment. To ease the transition, we will be offering a one-time, one-year tax assistance program. While the details are being finalized, I've directed my team to develop a comprehensive plan. I believe and I know City Council agrees, I've talked to many of you, reassessment should not place an undue burden on our taxpayers, particularly those with lesser means, and I look forward to sharing the plan with you as we move forward and working with you, of course. We also know that Delmarva's electricity bills are hitting city residents hard. The recommendation approved by the city's Utilities Citizens Advisory Board to raise water and sewer taxes by nine percent would make the problem even worse, and that's why my budget does not adopt their full recommendation completely. Instead, my budget includes a lower six-and-a-half percent water and sewer tax rate and a six percent increase to stormwater rates. We have significant challenges in our sewer and water infrastructure that have to be met to meet EPA standards. The typical residential customer will see an increase of four dollars and sixty-six cents to their monthly bill. Wilmington residents will still feel the effect of rising utility costs, but we're doing everything we can to minimize the effect and the pain. There is a trade-off, of course, to keeping a lid on property taxes and utility cost growth. It means we only have so many limited resources to make new investments, some of which you've talked to me about. As a result, we've kept new spending in this budget to a minimum by focusing on a few key priorities. During my campaign, we knocked on about eleven thousand doors, you've heard me say that time and again, and talked to Wilmington residents about what matters most to them. And what I heard is this: People care most about public safety. They want their neighborhood and communities to be safe. They want to see clean streets and parks for their families and children. And they want a city that is responsive to their needs, that delivers services effectively and efficiently. In this budget, we have proposed items that focus on the priorities I've heard at doors in your districts and across the city. It starts with ensuring children, parents, and seniors feel safe in their neighborhoods. That's the biggest priority. So this budget contains increases to help our law enforcement officers do their job and do it better. We're laser-focused on recruitment and tension, and again, we've heard from you about that challenge. A major part of that is ensuring our officers are trained and supported. To that end, we're entering into a new agreement for dedicated training space for the police department. This supports our goal of having quality police engagement, one of our biggest priorities. This budget calls for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to continue our license plate recognition program. This program was started under the American Rescue Plan, has proved invaluable, and that federal funding is going away. So over the past year, this system has helped law enforcement officers track down criminals, respond to Amber Alerts, and return missing persons to their families. Our public safety data shows that we're trending in the right direction, and that's a really good thing, particularly in response to what our residents demand. We see an eighty percent decline in shooting incidents over the last five years and a sixty-seven percent decline over the last year. And our chief is somewhere here in the crowd. Chief, thank you for you and your men and women for the great work that you're doing. But while these numbers are promising, let me be very clear: One shooting in our city is one shooting too many. I want to take a moment to reflect on the tragic news we had last week. Today, our detectives are working to solve a horrific shooting of a sixteen-year-old. A shooting of a sixteen-year-old. No community, no family, no parent should have to bear the loss of their child, let alone to a senseless act of gun violence. And that should inspire our efforts to do better, chief, and to all of us. It's all of our responsibility. We are committed to aggressively beating back gun violence here in our city, working with help and assistance from the state as well. And investing in our parks and recreation department is essential to this effort. We need high-quality places for our children and families to play and enjoy. Our parks must be safe havens. That's why we're requesting four million dollars for parks' capital improvements, which we plan to use towards much-needed upgrades to parks all over our city. We're committed to improving Camby Park, Urban Holloway, Barbara Hicks, Helen Chambers, Judy Johnson, East Lake Park, and more. We will also be creating a master plan for Brown, Burton, Winchester Park to ensure this gem in the Northeast reaches its full potential. Our community centers must be a hub for resources, recreation, and academic enrichment. That's why we're renovating the popular boxing arena at Hicks Anderson Community Center and making necessary improvements to the swimming pool there. Making the most of summer months and after-school time is critical for our youngest learners. That's why we're investing a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to expand the number of summer youth workers, raise their pay, and continue to fund the two program supervisors. Our investment in Maurice Pritchett Academy demonstrates to the community our commitment to the education of our children, and that commitment will continue to be one of our highest priorities. I've asked my good friend and colleague Jim Simmons, a career educator and former principal, and former councilman and Parks Director Kevin Kelly with developing a strategy for the City of Wilmington's role in education. I'm determined to ensure that Wilmington and Wilmington residents remain the leading voice in the effort to improve our city schools, and we welcome the efforts of City Council and your request in our budget as well. We're also increasing support for the community food program. We know it's hard to do well in school or make positive contributions to your community when you don't know where your next meal is coming from. Homelessness is also a growing problem that affects every neighborhood in this city. We're seeing an increase in our unhoused population, and street homelessness is out of control. And tonight, after our meeting, I will sign an executive order establishing a task force to make recommendations on how this city could address the rise in homelessness here in a better way. Today, many residents and senior homeowners are just not able to keep up with rising repair repair costs for their aging homes and properties. That means these residents are often forced to abandon their homes entirely, and that leads to vacant properties, which is a big problem across the city. That's why in this budget, we've included two million five hundred thousand dollars for neighborhood stabilization, something that I know is a priority for everyone on this council. These funds will go to support the city's plans to renovate our aging housing stock and launch a pilot program focused on alleyway cleanup and tree removal. I'm not going to tell my tree story right now. It's one of my favorites. Took me about four months to get a dead tree removed before I was elected mayor, but I digress. That's how much it's affected me that it took that long to get done. Reversing years of decay and the lack of investment will not be easy, but it's my commitment to all of you who care so much about it as well. We will lift up all neighborhoods and make Wilmington a better place for our residents and a better place to do business. And so, for fiscal year 2026, we're proposing a two-hundred-one-million-dollar general fund budget. This is only a four percent increase from last year. Over half of that increase comes from necessary changes to the way we deliver emergency medical services, our ambulance services. For years, I might be the only one that remembers, the Wilmington Fire Department was responsible for ambulance services. Then, for the last several decades, basic ambulance services have been provided in Wilmington by third-party entities at no cost to the city. Our current third-party provider, St. Francis, is no longer able to meet the needs of the city, and they told us so. So we need a new solution, and it will cost money to start. My budget would place emergency medical services, ambulance services, in the fire department, much like years ago. The new service will cost four million dollars to get started. In future years, we expect the cost to go down, and we will largely pay for this with revenue from ambulance fees that insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid will now pay to reimburse the city. We look forward to working with council to make this critical life-saving service a reality in our city. Overall, this budget includes a modest four-point-six percent increase. These are the funds needed to provide the basic services our residents expect. This budget also includes three million two hundred thousand dollars in wage increases for city employees. The proposal that includes an increase, this proposal includes an increase of one million two hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of mandated position review process. This year, we were proactive in addressing these critical needs to identify areas of need across the government workforce, and this enables us to fill hard-to-staff positions and ensures that we continue to have the best and brightest working for the city. And an additional one million eight hundred thousand dollars in this budget goes to pay for rising healthcare costs, which is something being experienced by every employer across the state. The goals of my budget are clear, Mr. President. It seeks to capitalize on our strengths, shore up our vulnerabilities, and invest in our future, and it does it while keeping costs down for our residents and spending taxpayer dollars responsibly. We have so much going for us here in Wilmington, so much to be proud of, so much to celebrate. At the beginning of this school year, as I said, and for the first time in decades, Wilmington students entered a brand-new school. The dilapidated Rodney Reservoir has been demolished and is being converted into a beautiful new park that reflects the vision of the surrounding community. Insight Corporation is moving into the old MBNA building on Rodney Square, bringing as many as eight hundred new employees to the city over the next several years. That's a big deal. We're supporting small minority businesses through our Economic Development Fund. This work furthers the goals outlined in the city's disparity study. HPCU Week is unbelievable and continues to provide unprecedented opportunities for our young people, with over twenty-three million dollars awarded to almost four thousand students so far, and another sixty-four million dollars committed for future years. Let me end where I began, which is to thank the people of our great city for giving me the opportunity to serve you, here in the city I love so much. As your mayor, I promise to build on our momentum and lead with hard work, with enthusiasm for the task at hand.
We are going to have a fifteen-minute recess for the mayor to present an executive order in the lobby. We're going to ask for everyone to please remain in your spaces until all council members have recessed out first. Council members?
Mr. President, I move that council return to the regular order of business.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that council return to the regular order of business on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. I would like to recognize council members Maria Cabada, Nathan Field, and Shanae Darby. This time we're going to have the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
March 6, 2025, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Mary Elena Root.
Mr. President, I move the minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we will have our city treasurers report.
March 20, 2025, total investments $493,710,243.85. Total cash on hand $15,858,987. Grant total $509,568,342.62 submitted to Wayne Sims.
Mr. President, I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will move to public comment. Just as a friendly reminder for anyone who is in council chambers when you come up to speak, please remember to introduce yourself. Also, please be careful when you step to the podium. And please do not direct any of your comments to any council members, but only to me as the president. You have three minutes to speak. When you have 30 seconds left, I will give you a friendly reminder to wrap up your comments. Adana Williams? I'm coming right up, ma'am. I'm coming up to the podium, right here to my left, please. Please watch your step and please remember to introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Dora Williams, and I live at 10 Ryan Avenue. I live on the Route 9 corridor. But I am an advocate for Delaware Concern for Environmental Justice, as well as on the church, St. Matthew and St. Andrew's Housing Task Force. And with environmental justice, as we know, that knows no district line, we're all environmental justice communities. We've all been, all of us have been impacted by pollution, okay? Whether it's toxic taxation in housing, our air, our water, soil, whatever, it's all the same. And tonight, I guess my comment is, I guess we all watched the ball drop at New Year. And I went to Night Watch, which we all know began during slavery. And I guess this was my ball drop today. I guess I can say Happy New Year to everyone. The budget's all out, and I guess everybody's got their instructions. And I have a prayer that I would like to say for all of us going forward. And it goes a little bit like, let's see. Lord, give us, teach us how to fulfill this sacred ministry. How to exercise the authority that Thou has entrusted to us. And train us day by day that we might know what is the hope of His calling and how we can be used for those in the ages to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. Please remember to introduce yourself once you reach the podium.
Good evening. My name is April Taylor, and I would like to start by thanking President Congo and the members of the Wilmington City Council for allowing me to speak on behalf of the residents of Walnut Street and 14th Street in Wilmington. They asked me to come and speak to City Council in reference to events that are happening in our area. I do want to start by saying that they're working on the sewer lines, and we are greatly appreciative to what's happening around the city to help the residents of the city with repairing the sewer lines. The contractors that are working on 14th Street are doing an awesome job. They're very respectful, and they have, in times when needed, have asked for, you know, the residents if we can shut the water off. And it's been greatly appreciated by the residents of 14th Street. However, on March 19, the contractors began working on Walnut Street. And the members, I guess, residents would have been here, but they were probably too tired to even come. What happened was, they started working at 5 o'clock. Without notice, the water was shut off at 8 PM. At 10:50, I had to go out and ask what was going on because our house began to quiver. I live on the corner of 14th and Walnut because they were drilling. And there were houses as far up as the Young's Corner store. Our houses were shaking. And I asked them if they would please just stop. There are a lot of seniors, a lot of teachers, a lot of medical professionals that live in our area, and a lot of children who have to go to school. Many parents weren't able to bathe their children last night. And what they are asking, what the residents are asking, is that if we have, we understand again and respect that these things are happening around our city in reference to the sewer, that there is some kind of, we're being informed when we're going to be, you know, this is going to happen. They worked until 3:15 AM. And again, that's why I said some of the residents who would have been here, who said they would be here, probably couldn't come because they were just sleep deprived, as I am. So any confusion that I might have in my voice. But we would like to have, and they told us that the mayor commissioned it, and that the lines were broken, which, I live on the corner where they were actually doing the work. And if the sewer line broke, our basement would have been flooded. So.
You have 30 seconds.
Just wanted to say, if the city council or whoever would be responsible for that would give us a notice, that is what they're asking for in our neighborhood when things like this are going to happen. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. WITN, do we have anyone virtually who signed up for public comment? Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to move to legislative business. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading. Agenda item number 0019.
Ordinance 25-006, agenda number 0019. An ordinance establishing a rate of taxation on real property and the taxable property of public utilities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance establishing a rate of taxation on real property and the taxable property of public utilities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading. Agenda item number 0020.
Ordinance number 25-007, agenda number 0020. An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years, 2026 to 2031 inclusive.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years, 2026 to 2031 inclusive.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading. Agenda number, item 0021.
Ordinance number 25-008, agenda number 0021. An ordinance to adopt a capital budget for fiscal year 2026.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt a capital budget for fiscal year 2026.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading. Agenda item number 0022.
Ordinance number 25-009, agenda number 0022. An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
An ordinance, ordinance number 25-010, agenda number 0023. An ordinance to amend Chapter 45 of the City Code regarding sewer system rates and charges, water rates and charges, and storm water rates and charges for fiscal year 2026.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 45 of the City Code regarding sewer system rates and charges, water rates and charges, and storm water rates and charges for fiscal year 2026.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications. Councilmember Owens.
Yes, Mr. President. On, I just want to remind people, on April the 12th, it is Community Cleanup Day. We will be doing something over in the 1st District, coming together as a community to clean up our neighborhood. And then also on April the 5th, we are taking a trip up to see the 76ers. It is open to all youth in the district. Feel free to send me an email if you're interested at CJ Owens, O-W-E-N-S, at WilmingtonDE.gov. Lastly, I just want to say, last night, we had a heartbreaking meeting, hearing from seniors from high rises across the city at the Health, Environmental, Aging, and Disabilities Committee meeting. And I just want to reiterate that what was mentioned in that meeting will not fall on deaf ears, and I look forward to working with everyone to address some of the concerns that was raised last night in that committee meeting and some of our senior high rises. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby.
I have no petitions or communication for tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo with Mr. Owens' statement. I was able to look at some of that meeting last night. I didn't get the chance to watch all of it. But hopefully, individuals, somebody will follow up on that. And we, and secondly, we too will be cleaned up on April the 12th. And we have different areas of the 3rd District that will be getting cleaned up. And I'd like to also thank everybody who came to my birthday party. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Oh, yes. I just want to echo, as it has already been mentioned, that April the 12th is the City Community Cleanup for the entire city, the 1st through the 8th districts. And for those that need more information, you can go to the City of Wilmington's website, and there is an application for you to fill out. We want to encourage you to please fill out the application so the City of Wilmington will know what areas to stop in and to make sure that they pick up the trash and the debris and the things that need to be picked up. And again, that's April the 12th, starting at 8:30, and I believe it's ending at 11:30. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Willauer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let residents of the 5th District know that there will be community cleanups in collaboration with civic associations across the 5th District. So contact your civic association, or please get in touch with me directly to find out how you can get involved. And secondly, as you heard tonight, there is a city, there's a countywide reassessment underway. And the county has extended the deadline to appeal your total assessed value until March 31st. So you can find out the information to appeal by doing a Google search, Newcastle County Board of Adjustments. You can find out the form there and fill it out, and it's due by March 31st. And also, I just wanted to let you know. And also, I just wanted to let you know that I and some other councilmembers are working very hard to making sure that those assessed values are fair and accurate because nobody should pay property taxes on more than what they could sell their house for. So please make sure you get your petition in if you think your house is over assessed. And also, I'm looking forward to working with everybody on this issue.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson. Councilmember Field.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bracy.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Cabada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind that, remind folks that the Roberto Clemente League is doing their spring registration. So boys, girls, and the little ones for T-ball, all can sign up. And it's great to see the kids out there. 302-510-7800. They also have a link on social media, Facebook and such. It's a great way to engage our children in the community. I remember both my boys playing in the league, my grandson and my granddaughter. So it's just a great opportunity for the kids to come as we continue the improvements at Woodlawn Park. Great atmosphere to see them play there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Just to piggyback on Councilmember Willhauer's comments on reassessment, I'm still talking to plenty of people who haven't seen their assessed value. I would just like to encourage people to make sure you find out your assessed value now so you can determine if you need to appeal or not. And if you just Google Newcastle County parcel search, you can pull up the website. And I recommend just putting in your, the number of your street name and clicking search. You'll have to scroll through to find yours, but otherwise the website can be glitchy. So just put in Google Newcastle NCC parcel search, put in your street number, click search, scroll through until you find yours, scroll down, and you'll see your assessed value. And if you don't think you can sell your house at that assessed value, you should appeal. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone who joins us this evening in council chambers. I'd also like to thank everyone who is watching virtually. So over the next few weeks, we will have our budget meetings. We are going to welcome all of the public to come and give comment, give input. If you want any information on when those budget hearings are, please call us at 302-576-2140. Again, that's 302-576-2140. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, everyone.